From Capitol, but I think council members should have something, just one time, just once. Then, you know, that's just a suggestion. If it, you know, if it's not a consensus, that's a decision you all can make moving forward. That's just a recommendation.
I'd like the ward funds, and I don't know what the impediment or whatever it is. I know that county commissioners do have commission funds where they can do things in their district. And to verify what Councilmember Burdenley, Dr. Burdenley has said, when I was councilmember with Councilman Mitchell, we had coat drives at Christmas time, back to school for people in the ward, weatherization, Mother Harris on Caulfield Street for her home. She applied federal, and we were able to pay out of the ward funds. Fixing streets, it really just got to without the bureaucracy of having a list of A E comnestates. There was something broken on the street, a curb or whatever, it got fixed. So, it was just really... So, we go back to school?
Like this crisis going on their feet and coat, we could take some of that money and get down, down here.
Yeah, and all the receipts and everything was done. I didn't personally have anybody. Mr. Osborne.
Osborne, yeah.
Yeah. Good.
Did you, I guess, yes, you did?
So...
You got the long day for the voting tonight, right?
Uh, let's see. Am I in? Am I in? Come in.
I know.
What are you doing? Huh?
You did, yeah, jelly. I found him, he was jelly.
Just was up in the house.
Jelly. Oh, we're talking. Yeah.
Doctor Norman, I'm learning from him. Isn't that... And he says, "Are you taking the medicine?" I said, "My medicine?" He said, "I ordered for you and I'm over." I said, "I don't know anything about it."
You trust God.
Right.
And it's like, he's a doctor?
How you feeling? Okay. Oh, good.
We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council regular voting meeting for tonight, which is Monday, November the seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. We'll have our invocation by the Reverend Barry, Barry, excuse me, Brian Barryhill of Heritage Baptist Church. I apologize, Pastor. After that, we'll have the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we come to you again tonight thankful, Lord, for another opportunity to call on your name. And, uh, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to open up this meeting. We ask you, Lord, as we go into this Thanksgiving season, Lord, be with all those in our community and around this land. Lord, I pray you'd meet every need. Be with those that do not have, and, Lord, I just pray you'd bless them this holiday season. Lord, I ask you, Lord, at this time, to be with us going through this meeting. Lord, you know the agenda, you know each and everything that's on the docket tonight, and I just pray that you'd be in the midst of it all. And, uh, Lord, you'd lead, guide, and direct, uh, keep us safe. And, uh, Lord, we'll just thank and praise you for all you do. In Jesus' name, we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge with the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, universal, where we do not disagree.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Barryhill, we appreciate the invocation and the prayers for the meeting this evening. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council regular voting meeting for tonight. This is a city council regular meeting of agenda items where official action will be taken tonight on the items that were discussed last Thursday at our legislative work session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item comments from citizens and delegates section for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol items, and then we'll get into the meeting, uh, the meat of the meeting. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you receive a warning, uh, you will receive a warning from the chair, and if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in a request for you to leave the premises. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, react to speakers. Speak from the audience, cheer, clap, or carry on conversations in the audience, um, or to the audience when you're at the podium. When you come to the podium, please address all of your comments and concerns to myself and council members. We're only required to accept public comments during required public hearings. We will not, um, we are not required to accept public comments on other items before this council outside of the public hearings. Um, when you come to the portion, comments from citizens and delegates, we ask that you, if you had a public hearing, that you would make those comments then and not rehash the comments after. If you have a cell phone or electronic device, we ask that you please put those on silent mode or power those off until after the meeting so they would not be disruptive. I'll go over the agenda items and how they will be handled by committees, and then we'll get into, um, the meat of our meeting. The committee chairperson will read his or her agenda items, and that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us make a determination before we vote. After that, we'll take the vote. And then, um, because these items were discussed on Thursday night during our legislative work session, we will not take questions or comments regarding each item during this meeting unless it's new information. Tonight is a voting meeting, and we either move to approve, deny, or take no action this evening. Prior to approaching the podium, if you'd like to speak to us, there are speaker cards outside, and they're in that little form. They're white cards at the bottom of that stack of three cards. You should fill your name and address out and all that information. And if you don't mind, if you want to talk to us, please come forward and hand your speaker card to our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Callen, and she will give it to our city clerk, Ms. Vicky Acker, to put into the official record. When you're at the podium, give us your name and address, and then, um, you can proceed with talking to us, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business germane to the city. This is not a question and answer format. This meeting is not a debate format. We're here to receive the information and try to deliberate and get the information for you. If we need to respond back, staff will respond back to you at another time. Um, any printed materials, please give it to our city clerk. I believe that's everything. Um, if you have any questions or comments, you certainly can bring those forward at the time when you come forward to talk to us. If not, we'll move on. If you'd like to have a printed agenda, they're outside. If not, you can follow us on the, um, screen behind me. So now, we'll move on with the agenda as presented this evening, and we've done the Pledge Allegiance. Now we have an announcement. It's a presentation of the Fall 2025 Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy class, and our Deputy City Manager, Ms. Chelsea Jackson, will come forward and give us that information as item twenty-five dash four thirty-eight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. Um, it is my honor to present to you this evening the Fall 2025 Graduating Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy class. As you all know, Dose of Douglasville is a ten-week program to familiarize residents of the city with the structure of city government and services provided. The academy provides residents with information, resources, and tools to become knowledgeable community members and leaders. This class this fall consisted of fifteen participants for the fall program, all of which were city residents minus two city employees. The, this graduating class will add fifteen more individuals to the alumni of the academy, now totaling almost two hundred individuals. Throughout their time, these participants have met with city staff, participated in several activities throughout the past few months. As you know, they experienced things like creating their own city budget and, uh, presenting a balanced budget to mayor and city council. Um, the fifteen individuals this year were very, very lively, and they were a dedicated group of residents. Um, one of the things that they thoroughly enjoyed is that they had a chance to be the city's V I Ps to the new recycling center. So, they were the first individuals to go to the, uh, recycling center. I gave them paper bags. Some came, like, four paper bags of recycling items, but they were able to have a fun, informative, and very hands-on session with our Public Services Department and just to learn firsthand about recycling and overall operations, um, of the new recycling center. So, that was one thing we did add, and we do love that these individuals give their time every Tuesday, two hours each, for free. Um, I just feed them a little dinner, and so that was the one thing this year that was special, that we were able to offer them to be first, uh, first-class V I P, uh, citizens into the new recycling center, and they thoroughly enjoyed it. It has been a pleasure to get to know these ten, fifteen individuals over the last ten weeks, and they are truly dedicated residents. Next, I, next, I would like to introduce you to Mrs. Patrice Holt, one of the graduates who will share their experience. And Ms. Holt is also, as I said, a, uh, city of Douglasville resident.
Let's give her a hand when she comes. She's being brave.
Good evening. Patrice Holt, sixty-five, thirty-nine, Bluffview Drive, Douglasville, Georgia. That's over in Ward Three.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, over the last ten weeks, you just heard, uh, Chelsea tell us that we had the opportunity to engage in a Dose of Douglasville, the Citizens Academy, and, um, as Pastor said, this is a season for us to be grateful. When I was reflecting on how I was feeling about it, I couldn't come up with another word, and that's what I wrote down. Grateful for the experience, definitely grateful for the people and the community that brought us together. When I first signed up for the academy, I expected to learn more about the city and how it worked. I'm nosy a, a little bit, right? What I didn't expect was just how meaningful this experience was going to be, how much I'm going to be, I was going to be inspired, um, by the people that I went through this learning experience with. Over these last few weeks, we haven't just sat down in a room and just received the information. We've really stepped behind the scenes of what's happening in our city. We asked real questions, a lot of them. Uh, we met the people who really make this city function every day, and we saw firsthand the passion that goes into serving Douglasville. From the highly skilled professionals that work in our sanitation department, I have so much more respect for them, uh, to the creatives that are working in marketing and communications, um, and the folks that are working in parks and rec, um, that's keeping us active and entertained. Um, my neighbors and I really learned that Douglasville is employing the best and the brightest. I really want to offer a sincere thank you to Chelsea, though. She's been our host. She's been our facilitator. She's been our learning advocate, and you really guided us with a lot of patience, uh, made sure that we had clarity, and you have been so genuinely enthusiastic for us to learn more. You've made every session really engaging. You created a space where we were welcomed to learn openly. We could ask anything. We not only asked everything, we asked anything, uh, too. And you truly, um, led by your leadership and your commitment to transparency set the tone for our entire academy. Uh, to my fellow participants, I'll never forget this experience. We had, um, a wonderful time learning alongside each other. Each week, I look forward to hearing everybody's perspectives, depending on what side of town they lived on. Uh, we laughed together. We discovered new parts of the city through zoning that we weren't quite, uh, sure were there and what was happening. That really made us feel like we were in the know. Uh, and I know that my neighbors showed up because they care and love Douglasville just like I do. So, thank you to my neighbors for your curiosity, your engagement, and your camaraderie. Had a special person who participated with me, my husband, so I can't say enough about that. Thank you for being my partner in everything and this adventure, too, every Tuesday. Uh, I hope that we all leave here with a deeper appreciation for this community, a stronger commitment to being active and informed citizens. Our experience in the academy may be over, but I've told all one hundred of my neighbors, um, that they should sign up, so be ready for that, those applications, uh, for next semester, Chelsea. But I really hope that the knowledge that we've gained, the relationships, and the pride in our city really stays with us. Thank you so much for giving me a little time.
Thank you so much, Patrice. And see, that's why I always love to hear about their perspective because those are the individuals that gave their free time to be, um, with not only me, but with the fourteen other individuals, as well as their, I didn't tell this part, but, um, during our police department, that's like one of the favorite ones, public safety. They stayed until a little after nine o'clock because they wanted a full experience. So, they want to do a full tour of the public safety complex, and I told some of them, I said, "You all can go home. You know, you've already been for two hours," and the majority of them said, "We're gonna go take a tour." And so, that, that, um, session ended a little after nine, but it's just their dedication of wanting to learn about every department and want to be fully all into it. So, thank you again, Patrice. With that being said, Mayor and Council, I would like to introduce you to the Fall 2025 Class, Dose of Douglasville. Um, to my, I believe, Ms. Hampton and Ms. Tate, they will be to my left or my right. I'm gonna let them, give them a couple of moments to get in place, but I do have fifteen individuals. Um, some of the individuals I stated, um, are not able to be here with us, but just going back to the dedication, some of those individuals actually sent people in their place to get their certificate because they really, really still want to be present. Uh, so with that being said, to, um, my right, you have Ms. Hampton, our city manager, and Ms. Kristen Tate, our operations manager, and they will, uh, fill out, fill out. They will give the certificates to the individuals as I call their name. The first individual is, uh, Sharina Adrade. She is, uh, unfortunately unable to be here with us. She's on vacation, but she has her very great friend, Ms. Natoya Loflin, who came in her place, um, to accept her certificate. Next, we have Ms. Latoya Boston. She's my troublemaker. Every class, she sat beside me, asking me all the questions. Next, we have Erin Hope. And I will go ahead and call up Ms. Patrice Holt, who you all just heard from.
Oh.
Jennifer Johns, which you all know as a city of Douglasville employee. Mr. Jason Martin. He's unable to be here with us today. We have Ms. Mia McDonald, who is also a city employee, and I believe Ms. Emily Hardaway will be taking that certificate. We're back to her. We have Ms. Felicia Muhammad. Ms. Jasmine Petty. Ms. Tomy Papula. Shawn Robinson. Tawana Roland. Dr. Tamika Scott.
School board member.
Member of the school board. Yes, ma'am.
So, she had enough meetings to go to, and she started to sign up for this.
And still stayed for three hours with me.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.
We have Ms. Sharon Diane Turner, and she's unable to be with us, but that is Breezy's mom. That's one thing that we, uh, said throughout. Uh, Breezy Straighton, who is the VP of our, uh, Elevate Douglas, her mom actually went through the Citizens Academy, so that was one thing, but she's unable to be here, but Breezy's mom, as we called her a lot during Citizens Academy. Um, and last, certainly not least, Ms. Kenya Williams. Thank you all, and congratulations, Mayor and City Council members. The individuals of the Fall 2025 Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy class have completed all requirements needed, all activities and sessions. Um, it's been very, very, um, great to have those individuals and just to share the last two and a half months with them. Um, and I continue, well, I wish them continued success as they navigate through their communities and through their neighborhood and be very proactive citizens. Congratulations to them all, and as a reminder, there will be a reception at the Alice Hawthorne Center immediately following council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. We must give Ms. Jackson and all of the participants of Dose of Douglasville.
Mayor and City Council, would you all like a group picture with them?
Sure.
If I can have all, uh, Fall 2025 Citizens Academy graduates to the front, please, for a quick photo.
So, that was wonderful. So, we've just heard the presentation, and having heard that, I will, uh, make a motion to approve item twenty-five dash four thirty-eight. May I have a second, please? Thank you. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-five dash four thirty-eight is approved, which is the Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy, Citizens Academy class. Now, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I will open the floor for a motion, uh, for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-five dash four zero nine. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Um, the agenda item is adopted. Um, item twenty-five dash four zero nine is unanimously approved. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes of the October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five Legislative Work Session and Minnesota November third, twenty twenty-five. Committees, regular meeting, and executive session. That is item twenty-five dash four ten. Open the floor for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-five dash four ten. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Item twenty-five dash four ten is unanimously approved. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Item 25-410 is unanimously approved. Now we'll go to the consent agenda, which is item number seven. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. We're on a roll. It's been properly moved in second, moved by Councilman Estes and second by Mayor Protem to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns, any issues with the consent agenda?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Tonight, under public safety, there is the item about increasing alcohol from 11:00 a.m. until 11:30. But in the tributary, it was already approved under consent agenda?
The item on the, the items regarding the entertainment district on the consent agenda are adoption of um entertainment district maps only. They don't have any change to the alcohol ordinance itself.
But it was approved for the tributary?
Yes, and and to amend the Ward Two Downtown Entertainment District as well.
So, so it's already been voted on for downtown and the tributary?
That's being voted on for the consent agenda, yes. And then the actual proposed amendment to the alcohol ordinance to allow for open containers during 11:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. is gonna be voted on outside of the consent agenda. Just the maps are being voted on in the consent agenda.
Right, so it's just the maps?
Yes, ma'am.
So they're making the consent agenda, I mean uh tributary because of Twisted Pie and all the development there to put them as part as entertainment district. So the map is being voted on at consent, and then we'll go and take everything to see if it's gonna be from 11:00 to 11:30.
Gotcha.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I know it's a lot of agenda items, so we need to have clarity. Any other concerns? If not, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. So we'll move on then. We're at item number eight, which is Economic Development Committee, that's chaired by Mayor Protem, City Councilmember uh Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under finance.
Thank you so much, uh Coach. We'll move on then to item number 10, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
The Housing and Community Affairs Committee has no business this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. We'll move on then to Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Protem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. We'll go back to you, Councilman Estes, Personnel and Organization Committee.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. The Personnel and Organization, Organization Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Planning and Development Committees and Public Improvement and Beautification Committees are both chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for planning and development or public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business, I just have.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
I was not here on Thursday, so I, um Coach Watts was and had a lot of the comments, so I've spoken with him. If he'll go ahead and take the um chair.
Okay, well, I will get another. Okay, so Vice Chair, Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight under public safety. That's item A to adopt an ordinance to amend Section 10-2C5 of the City's Code of Ordinances to update the open container rules within the city's entertainment district. And Ms. Chelsea Jackson will handle this tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Watts. Um on Thursday, you all discussed, and I brought before you all, um a recommendation, uh well, actually, uh it was brought to staff to do research and to update the open container permitting process. So the current process is an individual organization must complete an open container permit and submit to the City of Douglasville's Economic Development Department or Division. Um the permit is then reviewed by staff and submitted to be approved or denied by Mayor and City Council. Uh Mayor and City Council reviews it at a city council meeting and agrees to approve or deny the permit for the open container day. The applicant is notified, and then the staff notifies the businesses within the entertainment district of the upcoming open container day. After research, staff proposes elimination of the overall application process um and for the entertainment district to be enacted without a permit from 11:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. daily. So that's the only update with um, as you see, attached to the ordinance would be to remove the permitting process. Um currently, you all do have an open container or entertainment district area um between the hours, but of 11:00 a.m. and 11:30 p.m., it just now um has, it needs a application or a permit in order to be established. So this will remove the application process, uh but nothing else uh within the ordinance.
So to have, uh under the current, uh they would still have to have a per, they would or would not have to?
Under the current one, um they have to have a permit and an application. If Mayor and Council votes to approve or adopt this ordinance, it will remove the application and permitting process.
I see. All right. I'd love to hear from Council on this. I know we uh talked about it the other night. Uh I specifically asked for this to be on the agenda and not consent agenda, so we could talk a little bit more about it. Um so, anybody, yes, Madam Mayor, we'll start with you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Ms. Deputy City Manager, Ms. Jackson. I did ask uh from the Police Department last uh week, um Chief, of our Deputy Chief, since the entertainment district, now they don't have to go for permits, and they're considered that they already have the um the privilege to have open containers in the entertainment district. If there is an infraction, could they, we be made aware of that and and them not have that privilege? If there's, you know, one of the restaurants that there's a concern, I don't know if they violated something or there's a fight or whatever, if there's an issue, could that be brought to our attention?
Yeah, it could be brought to our attention because I think we will, we will monitor the situation.
Yes, sir.
We will have people in that district in that zone, but we watch for love and making sure that everybody is safe.
Yes, sir.
You know, so we wouldn't just like, just let it go and just, you know, just like other cities.
Yeah.
Same thing. We will monitor, watch it, make appropriate decisions. If we need, somebody needs to go to jail, they go into jail.
Okay. I just don't want them to think that they just can have their privilege, and if something happens, they, there's no consequences.
Oh, no, 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 no. We don't, we don't, we don't play like that.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Yes, uh any, anybody else, uh Madam Chair?
Look at Howard pointing at me like, you know she gonna have comments. You are absolutely correct. I'm gonna have comments. Let me just set the record straight. Um when it comes to alcohol, um it's not that I am disagreeing with what you like to propose. What I am um concerned with is, let me ask a question. How many restaurants are interested in participating in this?
So currently, we have all of our downtown restaurants minus, oh, actually, minus one, who do not participate in the entertainment district.
And who's that?
That is Blue Rose. And they, they used to, in the beginning, they did, but recently they had uh management changes, I believe. And so they recently requested within the last month or so to not be included, but they may in the future. But that they um, they have in the beginning, but now, within the last month, they decided not to.
So did you do, did anyone do a survey on the restaurants that wanted to participate from 11:00 a.m. until 11:30 p.m.?
Yes, we currently have all restaurants, minus the Blue Rose, who are currently participating in the entertainment district.
Okay, so open containers from 11:00 a.m. until 11:30 p.m., all restaurants are, are in, are interested?
Yes, ma'am, and that's the current po, that's the current, current ordinance. We're not making any changes to that.
Yeah, so what are we, what are we, what's different? Open container, what are we talking about different?
The, the proposed change.
Yeah, I'm sorry, to our Vice Chair, Public Safety, or Chelsea. I see you, Howard. Go ahead.
So the, the current proposal is to remove the actual application process running. Um because that creates more staff work, more opportunities for um, I mean, just user error um when you have a lot of paper and paper flow um going throughout. So that's what we've seen. We've had a couple of um instances where we've had members of staff not uh go and enact entertainment district or let individuals know. So just to make it more clean cut, when we uh looked at other cities such as Smyrna, Shambly, Canton, so on and so forth, they don't have an application process or permitting process. It's just a free open uh container between certain hours.
So um if you're in a restaurant and you wanna take um alcohol out, you can walk around in that district?
Yes, ma'am. Um you must have a plastic cup to not exceed 16 ounces. Yes, ma'am.
So the restaurants are gonna measure the 16 ounces?
Well, they'll just have a uh standard 16 ounce cup. Yes, ma'am, and then that's what they will pour the alcoholic beverage into once they, you know, check the IDs of the individual.
So um just, I, just to state, like with the tributary, the tributary is very contained, okay? Um when I think about the tributary, it's like your own little city, like uh for Halloween, y'all have um, it's so cute. You have, where you transport, it's just like a little city, and that's what we talked about initially until, I think, like 2008, things changed. Moving forward with the City of Douglasville, I just want to make sure that our council members um remember, and if, if you have a personal, you drink personally, ask yourself the question, what happens after you have X amount of drinks? What is your temperament? What is your attitude? And I say that to say, the binge drinking with young people. You think for not one second that adults will still allow people, uh young people under the age of 21 to drink. So if that is what we're trying to do to increase our downtown, is to increase the alcohol, um that's diff, that's very, that's concerning to me. It is very concerning, and um our police officers already have enough on their plate. They're gonna monitor it. That's a lot of monitoring, and we're already going around, going around the rotten bush of how can we pay them more? So um it'll probably pass without my vote, but um I've seen individuals, even in my own family, that alcohol increased, and after 11:30, you think after 11:30, then it's gonna go further. So um I know some of you all are saying, "I'll be so glad when she leave." Trust me. No, I'm just saying about alcohol. I mean, I have, I'm just very, very, very serious. It takes one time, once, and they may, they may say they're gonna walk around in the entertainment district. And Chief Sparks is correct. If they get out of bawdy-bawdy, you're gonna get arrested. But what does that do really to our downtown? So, I rest my comments.
Thank you, uh Madam Chair. Um yes, uh Mr. Estes, Councilman Estes.
I just want to remind everybody that what we are discussing tonight is removing the application process. And the hours of operation of it ultimately have no impact on the quantity that an individual consumes. Because whether they're doing it in the restaurant or outside or at home, that's on them. It's, this, this has no involvement in that and no control over that. We're just alleviating the load on staff who have to deal with the applications for these moving forward, so that.
It's just making it a lot easier to push and increase the use of alcohol.
That's all I have.
Well, I mean, I, I understand your comment, but like, I sat here behind council, and there are many of us negotiated even having alcohol next to churches. So we compromise that and continue to compromise and compromise. How much further are you gonna continue to compromise? So it's revenue, definitely to the restaurants, but what does it do to our community as a whole? Maybe at some point, but just to do that drastically and not have mon, not have the application process or just increase and it just doesn't make sense to me to just keep pushing it like that. So if it passes, it passes. Uh those are my comments.
Who else? Uh would anybody else like, uh Councilman Davis, do you have any comments on this item?
In my years of chief, have you ever known anyone to get stopped with a cup, a walker with a, with a drink in there? Have you ever wrote a ticket for somebody outside walking? Now I know one guy sit on the corner every night, and he have him a butt wiper, but he been sitting there for years. So have you ever?
You know, not right offhand, you know, I had to check all the stats, but we hadn't had any issues.
No, okay.
We hadn't had issues since uh Apple Theater had been open and doing things on the Plaza for years. Really never really had an issue.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um I, I know that when I came on council, it was right after the Arts and Entertainment District had been approved, but it seemed a little daunting, so we decided to, actually, it was kinda decide before I got here, but to kinda step back and just see how it worked out. And everything's has, from what I've seen, went really smoothly. But I feel like what this ordinance is doing, it's not so much telling people, "Hey, bring your coolers and lounge chairs to O'Neill Plaza and come have drinks," but it's saying, "Get your drink at the restaurant. Have you not finished it yet? You wanna walk over here to Forget Me Not and buy a candle? Visit the retail shops that are down here, because what studies have shown is that by opening up this Arts and Entertainment District in this manner, it actually decreases the number of alcohol-related incidents. Because instead of sitting there at that booth and continuing to have drinks, you cut it off. You take your little drink, pour it in your pink cup or purple cup, or get your little bracelet or whatever it may be, and then you walk down to the retail shop or maybe the uh Douglasville Welcome Center and get you a Douglasville coffee mug to, you know, commemorate your, your day in Douglasville with your girlfriends or whatever it may be. But the listening sessions that I sat in at GMA and the cities who have already done this, it has actually decreased their alcohol-related incidents, and it has increased their revenue, not just to the restaurants, but to the retail shops in their downtown area. And that's one of the things that we're looking to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else? Yes, uh Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, been around long enough to remember when we've had opposition to every time that we've tried to reform the alcohol laws in this community, and it's usually the, there's always warnings about how things are gonna get worse. I think an example of that was when we passed the extension on Sunday sales, and I remember being part of that debate. And the argument was that was increasing the opportunity for people to drink. Um what, the flip side of that that wasn't considered was the fact that if you had no, if you did not have the ability to buy a drink in Douglasville, you're probably gonna go into Atlanta to get a drink. Well, once you get into Atlanta, and if you've had a few too many drinks, you're thinking, "Wow, that's a $50 Uber ride back. I'll just, screw it. I'll just get in my car and drive back and take my chances." If you have a few too many at Fabiano's, you're five minutes away from home. It's a 10, it's a $10 Uber ride. I would much rather take my chances with people who are willing to, who realize that they're much closer to home. And in fact, it shows that it was actually safer to, to introduce Sunday alcohol sales. That being said, I, I think that we, I think we, we have to be careful about assuming the worst of our citizenry. We, we're in a community of adults, I think, and yes, we, we do have some irresponsible people out there, and we have a fantastic police force that takes care of that for us. The availability of alcohol is not going, is not going to increase irresponsibility. If somebody's irresponsible, they're already irresponsible. I, I share space with a rehabilitation clinic right now, and I, I hear the stories of, of the problems that some people have with alcohol and drugs, and it has nothing to do with availability. They, if somebody has a problem, they're gonna find a way to, to satisfy that problem. I think we should treat our, I think we should treat our citizenry as adults. And to Councilwoman Miller's point, if we have opportunities to improve the quality of life by giving them a more adult experience like this, I think that's a, I think it's a great opportunity to do that. Um and it, it provides- And it provides an economic benefit to the city at the same time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have one last comment. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. You know, in Ward Three, we've always wanted things that we haven't been able to get. And the very first, very large building right down the street is a liquor store. And some council members that sit on this council right now, no, that is not what we wanted. But we, but it happened anyway. So, when you talk about being responsible and listening to individuals in your community, make sure that you make sure what is the real personal agenda. Because that's not what we wanted, but it happened. So, when it gets to the point where it becomes personal and you are gaining off of it, it's not right.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. I just wanted to commend the council for hearty debate and for everyone to, to be respected and to vote your convictions. So, thank you so much. I appreciate the diversity and thought and indeed on this council and how we respect each other and our individual perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I just, I just had a couple of comments. I guess I, the reason I asked for this to be on the agenda is to invite a conversation. One thing that I know for me personally and my votes on open container, we've had a number of downtown businesses and other functions, you know, Culture Arts Council and just different entities that have requested and, and I, I personally have voted for every open container request. Those are all events that are contained downtown. The, the entertainment district that we created, this council, you know, voted for that entertainment district to invite, you know, a variety of things. We want, we want more restaurants. We want more retail. And the decisions that we've been making as a council, from my perspective, since I've been on the council, is, is we've been focusing on downtown. And to Councilwoman Burdanley's point, there are areas within our city limits that have needs. And I would like to think that, you know, I'd be the first one to shout from the rooftop the day that grocery store opens up in her, in her ward. And, and I, you know, I definitely share her sentiments on, on the liquor store that opened on that side of town. With all that being said, you know, the reason I've struggled with this particular item is, and I've kind of gone back and forth this weekend, is, is mainly because, you know, I, I don't necessarily want to do everything that everybody else is doing around us, but, you know, it is a function of, of our staff to approve these, these applications. And, you know, I'm, I'm not too sure about the hours. And I guess that was one of my questions. I started talking before I asked my question. What are the serving hours right now downtown, weeknights, weekends? Is there, don't we have established serving times?
We do. It's in the ordinance, but, I mean, it doesn't mean that the restaurant has to serve until two AM. I mean, they can, they can turn it off. Some restaurants close at ten.
But this would only pertain to someone walking around with an alcoholic beverage after eleven thirty? Or is that, eleven thirty is a cutoff when they can actually walk out with that alcoholic beverage?
Correct. Correct.
Well, any, anyway, I just, I, I respect everybody's viewpoint on this. And I've, I've struggled with it a little bit this weekend, but based on the fact that every time we've had an open container request, I've, I've voted to approve it. And so, in this case, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to feel hypocritical. So, I am going to...
Excuse me, Coach Watts?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a comment too? You're right as far as the discussion and we voted. I can say that for me, there have been things that I voted for in the past that appear to be presented as won. And then, when, when you, when I've really gone back to really truly do research and, and just kind of put puzzle pieces together, if I could go back and change, I would do that. So, I'm openly saying that. There are things that is presented, and then, once it's presented, sometimes things are done right up under your nose. So, if it's been an error on my part, I could, I, I make that known openly.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Burdanley. I'd like to think that any ordinance law, as it was referred to earlier, that we pass in the city limits at some point in time in the future, if it has ever become an issue that we need to look back at. And we're looking at the charter and some of the things that, you know, that we would revisit, anything that we, you know, may pass now. But, City Manager, do you have anything to add before I make a motion?
Yeah, no, I was just, I mean, you, I was just making the statement that you're correct. If at any given time, you can repeal the ordinance. The other is just to add to you all's, as Ms. Jordan mentioned, or I should say, Ms. Jackson mentioned, this is to allow for, to remove the application process. At any given time, any restaurant can choose to participate or not to participate. And I would think that in some instances, some of the restaurants, if it's the non-event day, they probably will not participate. But it will be their choice.
Right. And, and that's been my understanding, that there might be a couple restaurants that won't participate. And, and I know that these types of ordinances are kind of building for what we foresee in the future. And what we see in the future are more restaurants that will be able to sell alcoholic beverages, you know, or beer pubs or whatever it is on the horizon that may be coming our way. And so, and, and I was just in Huntsville representing the city council to look at the way they're doing things, and it was mentioned the other night, the purple cups. And, and, you know, personally, as I walked around, I, I was running one night downtown. I did a lot of hiking downtown with, with groups, and I never saw an issue. They, they had that ordinance in place. I do like that idea. I know that there's a cost involved, but I, I, I thought, before I knew this was gonna be on the agenda, when I was in Huntsville, I thought if this ever were to occur in Douglasville, this would be an ideal thing. In other words, everybody knows if you're walking around with a, now, I, I don't, I personally don't drink, and so, when I got my purple, purple cup with ginger ale in it, I thought, I asked, I asked, you got any clear cups back there? Just so, you know, I didn't, I didn't want somebody to say, hey, I saw Chris Watts the other day, you know, drinking downtown Huntsville. But anyway, I, I say all that jokingly to say that I, I thought that was a good system in place for Huntsville. I don't know where this ordinance will lead if it were to pass, but, you know, maybe at some point, we would look at everybody that's participating, somebody walk, now, we're saying clear cups, but I, I, I can go home and go to Walmart and get me a whole stack of clear cups and then go to my car and fill it up, you know.
I like red or purple. I like a color.
But anyway, okay. Does anybody else have any comments before I make a motion? All right. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve item twenty-five dash three-two-five.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. I have a motion to approve item twenty-five dash three-two-five. May I have a second, please? Thank you. Councilmember Miller in. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-five dash three-two-five with lots of discussion. Do we have any more concerns, comments, issues, any more deliberation? I'm not hearing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye. Oppose, nay. Thank you. The ayes have it. Twenty-five dash three-two-five is approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we have tonight under public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. We'll move on. Vice Chair, you have Recreation, Culture and Tourism Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under Recreation, Culture and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. Technology Committee, chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
No Ivans tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Burdanley.
You're welcome.
Any other business to come before council tonight from the council elected officials? No, I don't see any. Then we'll move on to updates from our city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Attorney Jordan. Our chief of police, Dr. Gary Sparks.
No business, Madam Mayor.
What? You don't have no car show or nothing this weekend?
We chilling this week.
What? I can't believe it. Thank you, Chief.
We got a class going on tonight that when I leave here, we have a foundational transformation of life.
Okay.
Class that we do every Monday night.
Very good. When is midnight basketball?
Well, I gotta get with Chris.
I may have to turn out there and play a little something. I gotta shoot from the five.
Chief, don't you have a Town Hall tomorrow night? I got it written on my calendar. Did I have it written wrong?
You may not. I got somewhere going on right. I have to look. I think we...
We have a Town Hall? Let me see if it's on my calendar.
As we coming up on the, our end of the year report and we coming up on the holiday season. So, usually, we have a holiday season, Town Hall meeting, so we can advise the citizens on how to prepare for this holiday season as, as they go out and going buying Christmas items and traveling back and forth, how to stay protected. So, yeah, so we...
That's coming up.
You do have a Town Hall tomorrow?
I don't have it on my calendar. Is the city manager? Is the Town Hall tomorrow for the Police Department?
I am not certain, Madam Mayor.
It's on the website calendar.
Okay.
From the Police Department.
All right. Except if it's on the calendar, it's there.
It's the Town Hall then. What time is it?
That's all right.
What time is it, Coach?
Probably seven.
I have it down for six-thirty.
Six-thirty or seven o'clock.
And people can go online, because I've gone online before to listen to it. And you, and like you're saying, you tell us all about that.
One thing, and I won't be going, one thing we thinking about doing is doing, trying to do some more part, podcasting. To summer cast, because some people don't come.
Yes, sir.
And then, we could do exactly what you're saying. You know, so we can get it out to more people.
Yes, sir. All right. Well, we have a Town Hall tomorrow at six-thirty. Thank you, Dr. Sparks. Our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Just to remind you all, we do have executive session. So, yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you, city manager. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, comments from citizens and delegates, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business germane to the City of Douglasville. No takers? What? Okay. We don't have any takers. I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss a personnel matter after a brief recess.
So, I'm moved.
Thank you. I have a motion. May I have a second? Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-five dash four-fifty-one to adjourn to executive session to discuss a personnel matter after a brief recess. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We are in executive session, adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel matter after a brief recess. Take a recess and come back.